Okay, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the June meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Commission. So thank you for participating and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're going to do a roll call. So Michel Brocard? Is Michel?
Yes, I'm here, present.
Present, so he's on Zoom, okay. Christian Picot?
Present, yeah.
Zoom. Michael Anderson?
Present.
Gene Rudlaz?
Present.
Okay, fantastic, we're Zoom, and myself, Mark Schiffer, and our student liaison, Catherine Blackmore, hopefully she may join us a bit later. So going down the agenda, item number three on the agenda was to review previous, approve the previous minutes. If we could have a second to approve the minutes of the meeting?
Second motion.
So Christian seconds the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, previous minutes approved. In terms of new appointments, I don't think that this month there were any new appointments.
Not that I'm aware of, although I know Marcela, who was previously working in the clerk's office, is now working in the building department.
Yes, yeah, that's correct, very nice. So the next item on the agenda, we're going to, it's the sales service in the village. It's an effort that was spearheaded by Christian, so maybe if Christian, if you can give us an update, I think there was a, the RFP was issued?
Sure. So, yeah, RFP, we take four bills, as we mentioned last time, we had some questions and answers period, and all of the tower operators came back with answers that we had. We made of the RFP self, self committee, and started to look at all of the hits.
Can you, can you try to turn your microphone up a little bit? Thank you.
Is that any better?
Yes, maybe speak a little bit louder.
Okay. And we, at the committee, went through all of the bids, we moved to village standard format for ranking them. We then, on Monday, sat down with the mayor and trustees and trustees to go through some of their findings. The conclusion from the conversation on Monday is that we'd like the tower operators to make their final and best financial offers, and gave them two weeks to do so.
Okay.
Hopefully by the end of, I think within, by something around the 2020, I think, answers should be met, and decision will be made in a board meeting. It should be on the, possibly the board will put it for consideration on the 25th of June, after we got the final best offer from everyone.
Okay, thank you so much for the update. I was wondering whether, do we know if the towers that were, the new towers that were constructed by the, by the town are in operation yet? So there was two new towers, one in Hampton Bays and one in the, on North Sea by the dump?
I was, I was just up there at the dump, and it's starting to do some preliminary work, but the towers certainly are nowhere to be seen.
Oh, the towers are not yet now? Okay, but these, I think, should substantially already improve the service, because they are two great areas, one right by the canal in Hampton Bays and by the dump, so that's good. So the next item that we have on the agenda is the creation of a business improvement district. I think that Eldon Scott, who could not be here tonight, I think, spoke to Gene Rudlaz, and Gene, can you maybe give us an update on that? Gene? Is Gene with?
Sorry, I was on mute, sorry. Um, yes, I had several meetings with Eldon, I spoke to him earlier today, and we do have sort of a draft proposal that has a lot of components to it, both short term and long term. The main thing that we're focusing on now is just to get agreement on what the mission statement for this business district is. I mean, in its sort of most basic form, it's to support the Southampton Village businesses and foot traffic, and really try to identify ways that we can do that. We're right now soliciting other members of the committee and trying, locally, and trying to understand sort of best practices. So I'm hoping we, we are meeting with Eldon on Wednesday, and hopefully we can have something to share more broadly. But for the public, if there are comments and or suggestions for what the mission statement should be, now's the time to send it in, because we do want everyone's input.
Yeah, thank you so much. So the purpose of creating really a bid, a business improvement district, which is a state-created vehicle, that will allow the bid to actually, I don't want to use the word tax, but impose a certain, a payment, a yearly payment, to all the businesses within the business improvement district to contribute into a fund that will then be used for, to, for its improvement. So that, that's really the purpose of the bid, is to really create a vehicle that all of the business within need, they have, they should contribute, gives authority to, to do this, yes. So I think that's a very, very good idea. It would be allowed all the businesses to coordinate activities, coordinate maybe the signage, coordinate maybe even the, the mix of retailers in the, in the, within the district. That's, I think it's a very good initiative.
The mix of retailers is actually at the crux of this, because we need sort of an analysis of what it is current stage, what's missing, what could be, you know, brought in to enhance. So it is an analysis piece of it that we're hoping to also get off the ground, but more broadly, if there are businesses that, you know, want to be involved in this, we would love to have those, start to have those conversations.
Okay, great, okay, thanks a lot, Gene, appreciate it.
It's actually, it's actually.
Can you hear me, Gene?
Yes.
Yes. How does that coordinate or compete with the existing Chamber of Commerce? These are, these are people who voluntarily pay a little bit to the chamber for the same purpose, isn't it not?
Uh, no, not really, the Chamber of Commerce is a separate organization that, that is really for anybody who wants to become part of a, it's like, like a networking organization. For anybody who wants to be member of the Chamber of Commerce, you can have people from East Hampton, people from West Hampton, and they have, they organize like, you know, evenings to meet up, to network, they organize the Agua and Park, but they are really a separate not-for-profit organization, whereas a bid, a business improvement district, is something that's under state law, allows to, all of the businesses within a certain geographic area will be mandated to participate and contribute into a fund for this, for that purpose.
And, and Michel, we would also, we are going to be working with them, they're definitely on our list of people to engage with, to see where we can partner, so that we're not, you know, redoing efforts, redoubling efforts.
Exactly, and they will be part of the bid, because they are within the, their offices are within the village business district.
And I think with Eldon, who has the expertise sort of on the more real estate side, he says, you know, we're not sure at this point what structure, what formal structure this will take, whether it's a bid, whether it's something else, but the, the actual, it doesn't really matter, because whatever we choose will end up serving the businesses, that's the whole point of it.
Yes, okay, right.
Are there similar bids in East Hampton or Shark Harbor, and have they been successful?
I believe that, I don't know about Shark Harbor, but someone, I think East Hampton may have it.
Right.
We have to look into it.
I know that, there are lots of bids in the, I know there's one in Brookhaven, there's one in Patchogue, there's one, a lot, a lot of them in the city, so, you know, it's a standard vehicle, it's, that's in the, within the state law. Okay, thank you so much. So the next item on the agenda, actually, you go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, so, as you lay out, the mission statement, that we've got to put together to do, I'm curious on the vision side, how one will address this, both short term and longer term. Short term in terms of what you discussed, longer term, how you would weave in a sewer district, and the implications of it, both from a wet use, what, what housing zone, all sorts of different implications that it would have for a central district. We know that's five years out, you're trying to solve for tomorrow, but I think we, I just wanted to know, in your discussions, if you could have some thought about, you know, a ten-year, fifteen, twenty-year vision, and then have steps, because there's next year, there's five years, there's ten years.
Exactly.
If you do that, there's going to be the sewer and the implications of it, which is quite significant in terms of the implications.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and I do have right in front of me the actual draft outline, and we have draft one to five years, small business district, task force plan, draft five to ten year, the sewage, so it's out there as well, I mean, it's all connected, and it, a lot of it is trying to set up the foundation, get the right people involved, get consensus, and just chip away.
You're on the right track, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, including, including transportation, go ahead.
I have another question. When you create a bid, do you go to the fifty businesses in the village and you say, would you like to pay five thousand dollars per year, because we want to do a bid? Or do you inform the fifty businesses that the village has somewhat decided to create a bid, and then they're going to be taxed five thousand dollars per shop per year? How does it work?
I don't know if it's five thousand dollars, I think it may be, it's, I don't think it's that much money.
I don't know what the costs are, and Eldon has done this before, and is pretty much more the expert, but my understanding, and even if I didn't have this background, I think consensus is better, in trying to get the feedback of the local business owners as to what they need, and try to figure out how we can best meet those needs. So I don't think it's.
So you, so you pull fifty shops, and if you have twenty-six to say yes, then you impose it on the others, or how does it work?
I, I don't know that it's sort of an all or nothing, or whoever buys into it, I'm not sure of those details, all I know is that right now, what we really need to understand is what do the local businesses currently need that they don't have, and what businesses are we missing that we can work with the broker community to attract and address some of the issues that came up in the master plan.
Right, and also, just to respond also to Michel, is that the bid is one possibility, it's a possibility that, which I personally recommend, but Eldon and Gene are studying the other possibilities in terms of structure, that's not necessarily a bid, where there would be the authority or, or the ability to mandate a fee. So, all right, so, and you.
In order to be substantial, let's say it's not five thousand, let's say it's a thousand, and there's fifty shops, this is a fifty thousand a year project?
No, this, I, I think we'll have to wait until they, they study it a little bit more, and whether they want to structure it as a bid, or they want to maybe just structure it differently, more on a voluntary basis. But if it's, I, I think it's warranted, a bid is warranted, I think there's enough activity, enough volume of business that warrants such a bid. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, actually, I, I had forgotten to put it on the agenda, but I wanted to just touch base, and Michel, and Christian, about the offenses, the review of the, of the fines and offenses. So are we, do you want maybe to summarize it? I think Christian had prepared something, am I correct?
Well, it was chaired by Michel, Michel drafted a memo, which we all did use, and Michel, as the board, stressed here, the mayor has it. I am in the absence of Michel, going to present the finding of that draft work, which included two, three village residents, I think we had all attorneys amongst the village residents, and two planning commission members, and I'll present on behalf of Michel the finding next Thursday evening to the board in Michel's absence, and so I'll let Michel very quickly outline by the findings that I'll deliver on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we have summarized it in this forum several times already, so I'm just going to repeat what I said several times, which is, we feel after thorough studies and so many meetings and several months of work, that it's all about enforcement, and that under the new team, it's, it's really a decision from the building department, and the mayor, and the board of trustees, to utilize the existing code, and, and first of all, you're vigorously existing fine and offenses rather than modifying them. There are, there is another solution that we also mentioned to the board, which is to rewrite the code and propose ranges for fine and fines for each offense, but that's a project, it's not, at this point, the village really feel that there are implications. So at this point, it's really all about the decision by the mayor and the board of trustees to maybe, and, and we had, we had the building department to be vigilant, more aggressive, more thorough inviting up offenses and, and imposing fines.
Right, so just also to maybe just to add a little bit, I mean, now we do really have a new team, because there's a new judge, a new town attorney, and new enforcement officers, and a new building inspector, even though he was here before, just came back, so there is really very much, a very much, a brand-new team, and one item that was discussed was the raising of the fines, that we thought that maybe if we raised the fines, it would be an addition, but I think the group that studied it thought that maybe the way to go is to revamp the enforcement and make sure that the enforcement is more stringent, so.
In fact, in fact, the top fine of two thousand has never been asked by the prosecutor, not even a thousand. It's, it's not, it's not the cap that's the problem, the problem is, the fence is not being written up promptly now, totally now, or they're just being negotiated, you know, all the time the enforcement officer, rightfully so, seeks enforcement rather than to report a fine, and then problems are resolved, rather than resulting in a fine, which is probably a better outcome.
Right, right, exactly. All right, thanks for the work, and then we look forward to your presentations at the board of trustees. The next item that I have here on the agenda is, well, I'll go to, I'll, you know what, I'll go to the next item, number five, the update by Alex, of, on the recent zoning changes, if you want to maybe summarize a little bit what they are.
Well, I think we covered a lot of these last time, that were recently approved by the board, changes with respect to how garages are included towards the gross floor area, and other little tweaks to the zoning code in terms of setbacks and things like that. One of the things the trustees have been contemplating is a, a study that has been ongoing with myself and our consultants at BFJ for workforce housing, so I think that's something that the trustees may be looking for some input on, they had some questions on the proposal that was presented to the trustees at one of their last meetings, and we're going to be continuing to, to refine that before putting that to a public hearing.
Right, so right now, the, the garages do count into the, as, as part of the GFA?
Um, it's a, attached garages, I believe, count up to fifty percent, and detached garages do not count, assuming it's four walls and a roof, and not used for other accessory purposes.
Right, and do they have any plans or studies of anything else to be included into the GFA, or no?
Um, I think that's, that's it right now, I know there were some comments about how half stories are regulated, that I think, you know, we're looking into, but there were some changes about double-height stories that were already addressed.
Yes, and half, there's, sort of buried, you know, when it's a half-buried. I know in New York City, the code is that if it's more than fifty percent into the ground, like fifty-one percent into the ground, it does not count, but if it is fifty percent or less, it does count in the, in the floor area.
That's similar to how our code works, which is the distinction between a basement and a cellar, I believe.
Right, exactly, exactly, okay, very good. And in terms of the historical preservation, and has this, the, has this been completed?
Um, that work is still ongoing.
Oh, this work is still ongoing, but we are still going with, is it fifty years?
Uh, there's certain thresholds that prompt different processes, but there's, there's no rule about fifty years in particular.
It was not, I thought we had a certain date, I remember we had.
There's a seventy-year look back, where demolitions have to go to the full board, where is demolitions less than seventy years can go for an expedited process, but every demolition is reviewed by some level of the architectural review board.
Mm-hmm, right, okay, very, very good. The other items that I have here on the, yes, go ahead.
Alex, we brushed over what was important issue, which is workforce, but we're going to go over it to listen to the meeting via video, couldn't hear at all what BFJ and yourself actually were saying, so we didn't, you know, anybody who's going to listen to, or hasn't listened to the recording, who was not intelligible. Can you just give us one, one thing? It'd be great if the planning commission, since this item is clearly a, a master plan initiative, is something that the planning commission should be looking at, and again, it's quite bad, to share with us, one, I mean, it'd be great to have the documentation that was first laid, because there's a lot of material that we do, and two, could you just give us the point, synopsis of the outcome of this discussion, if we can hear any?
Right, what Christian is referring to is that at the presentation by BFJ, at the board of trustees, somehow he had, there was an issue with the microphone of BFJ, and we couldn't really listen to any of the comments that he was making.
Hmm, I'm surprised by that, it was, I thought it was audible in, in the room, and I could ask that the presentation be shared with the, the commission members.
Right.
Uh, but essentially what they, uh, what we have been studying is expanding residential opportunities along North Sea Road and Hampton Road, which are in the two village office districts, the OD district and the HRO district, and allowing up more opportunities for multi-family housing there, small multi-family housing unit, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, things like that, if a percentage of them is used for, for workforce housing.
Right, but I, I would echo the, the comments from Christian, to say that this type of policies or changes really should be brought to the planning commission, that and the board of trustees reviewing it, and then doing the public hearings for, with the regulation already written, is sort of bringing up like sort of a fait accompli, and unless there's really a big mistake on the rule that has been written, it's hard to, to really have the discussion at that time. Sort of, they're writing the discussion, doing the public hearing, but the rule is written already. So I think that if it would behoove the, the board of trustees to, if they brought it in front of the planning commission, the planning commission could then become the forum where discussions and, and the public could bring in their, their ideas, suggestions, I mean, there is, in the village, there is a lot, a lot of very talented people, very experienced people, and suddenly, in real estate, that could bring also their own ideas. So I hope the mayor is listening. Another item that, on the agenda here was, I'm not sure exactly what's happening with Liberty Garden, do you know?
With what?
With Liberty Garden.
Actually, I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay. The, so Liberty Garden is a affordable housing development that's being done at the church, I don't remember the name of the church.
I believe it's Baptist Church?
The Baptist Church on County Route Thirty-Nine, across the street from Burger King, and the proposed development is geared primarily to disabled veterans.
Correct.
Right, and then the issue is whether this type of development is really appropriate for our location, where in fact we have, there is such a need for affordable, for affordable housing for the, the workforce, and to provide a development like this in our community, whether, does it really serve our community, or is it just because the average median income in Suffolk County is so high, so the, the amount of subsidies that are available for this type of development are rarely at the maximum in an area like here, based on the HUD guidelines? So I think that it's, the town is doing a good thing in looking at it, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the approval is on hold right now, no?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure, okay, well, we'll, we'll look into it, we'll look into it, but I, I think that, okay, very good. And the next item on the agenda, and I think that the Southampton Association has been very involved in that, in the Liberty Gardens, and, you know, and their efforts, I think, are being listened to, that really, it has to be looked, you know, a lot more reviewed. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, well, I have here, Community Housing Fund updates. The Community Housing Fund for workforce housing and affordable housing is in full, it is full swing, and anybody who wants to present projects or get subsidies through the Community Housing Funds are welcome. They have a very nice program for the conversion of, or the creation of accessory apartments, they call it accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, ADU, such that in your house, if you are able to, if you want to create an accessory dwelling unit and have it at the workforce housing, you can get a grant for up to one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and the compliance period is ten years, meaning that you have to keep that apartment or, at an affordable rate according to the HUD guidelines for ten years. So, so that's a good program, and I, you know, recommend everybody to inquire about it and try to, you know, take advantage of it. Next item on the agenda is the deer management, if you want to update it.
Yes, um, thank you, Mark. We, as you may know, or may not know, that contract, deer management contract is up June first, so we've had preliminary discussions with the mayor, and Suffolk County Deer Management to extend, to possibly extend the contract for another year, possibly two. We're still in the beginning bargaining stages right now with the mayor and Suffolk County Deer Management, and another meeting is expected within a week or two with Suffolk County, to try to finalize the proposal.
And do you think it would be worth for the village to have a request for proposals and give various proposals?
Uh, well, it depends, that's in the mayor's, the mayor was speaking of that at our last meeting, it's, it's really up to the trustees as far as what they want to do as far as RFP is concerned, but if they need to do an RFP, they certainly will.
Yeah, I think it would be the right thing to do, to do an RFP for the, for them. Yeah, I think it would be the right thing to do, to do an RFP for the, for the, I mean, there, there's not that many companies that do it in Suffolk County, but there's certainly three, uh, two or three companies that actually do it, and it would be fair for everybody to do it through an RFP process.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, but I think that the last one, what Suffolk County Deer Management did was actually very positive.
Right.
They did, uh, was a, they, we did, they did try to control or reduce a little bit the deer population, and whether you are not, you're against, or against, uh-
Right.
This type of, uh, management. All right, the, any, any other comments?
I have a comment about, uh, Christian, you had sent me, um, an email a couple weeks ago, and I didn't reply to your email, because I just did speak to the mayor last week about Grant, the Tree, um, Harbor Foundation and the grant writing, and, um, after my meeting with deer management, I did speak to, uh, the mayor and, and ask him that the grant writer get in touch with me directly, and that, um, he did say how busy she was, and how important the other work that she's doing, but I did tell her that, you know, you forwarded the email to Christian, Christian sent it to me, it's something that's out there, a lot of money is out there for the trees, um, and that we should at least look into it and try to, uh, apply for some grants, so he did write her an email expressing, uh, you know, the planning commission, that we would like to have her contact us, and, uh, we'll go from there as far as, uh, writing some grants and hopefully getting some money.
Uh, and maybe get some more signage within the village, that we are a green village?
Mm-huh.
You know, it should, it should be sort of advertised, it should be promoted.
Well, they have, uh, they're up there, I, I think as you enter into the cit-, into the village, uh, on the main roads, uh, North Main Street, I know, has one.
The Tree USA?
Yeah, yep, yeah.
I didn't see it.
I don't know if there's one on, uh, uh, North Sea Road or not, but I believe there's, there's one on Hill Street, too.
Oh, there's one here, I haven't seen, I know the Village of Greenport, that's also a Tree US, City USA, has it, has it, has it all over.
It does.
Okay, very good.
Mark, on the, and, uh, Michael, on subject to trees, um, it's gonna be the time now where we need to sort of begin working on, uh, private trees. We did all our work three years ago on public trees, very successful, a lot of interest, everybody, everybody's taken a lot of credit for it, that's great, um, but now we need to work on some issues on public, on private trees, so if you remember in section one oh seven dash ten, we had put in a small section on private trees, and that needs to be beefed up, along with the master plan, the master plan on base, which has formed, uh, this section on private trees, which basically says, uh, the following, the implementation of trees preservation ordinance, which requires some documentation of trees in any yard setback, uh, with a caliper over ten inches, and this documentation would occur during an approval process or new structure or demo. Um, so, you know, we'll start doing some work on it.
Mm-huh.
Uh, Michael, we can, we must maybe on that, uh, since your, uh, is on a public tree.
Sure.
Not related to peace, but, but it's all about trees. Um, one of the issues we're gonna have to, so this, this is part of the master plan, but, but there is one other issue, uh, and, and it's really dealing with a setback, for trees that are ten inches in caliper above, and anytime there's a request from the building department for modification, um, then they get in the door and, and possibly put a situation when those ten and over are in a setback as soon as master plan, and the remedy project, uh, is done with the, like, that, you want to take them down.
Yes.
One of the other things that's come up, uh, and I want, you know, all of us to think about, uh, we had, the president mentioning, you know, look at our factory road, we have new construction there, and, and we have, uh, and a lot of heritage elm trees, which is so few left in the village, uh, given the disease that they have, uh, they're all being taken down on our property. So the question is, you know, our master plan says, we're only gonna sort of think about trees in the setback, yet you have what we'll call heritage, uh, really high quality trees, uh, on property, uh, that are being knocked down, uh, maybe indiscriminately, uh, or certainly without any review. And, uh, that's where it's gonna get interesting, because I think a lot of people, when this was attempted a few years ago, uh, pushed back on it. Um, certainly easier to think about on a setback, um, considering it's really, it was okay with the master plan, okay with that, but then, do we also wanna think about heritage trees inside or not? Um, and, and let's not sure if, but, if we're, if we're, if we're gonna work, uh, rely on it.
Yeah, I think, so, that's a good point, but I think we should definitely look for the community input, because I think that, uh, to regulate trees on private properties, uh, is something that really needs to be looked at it carefully, especially in our village where, um, everybody spends a tremendous amount of, tremendous amount on landscaping, so yes, if they remove a tree, though, they will replant all the trees, so I think that this is, uh, somewhat of, uh, an issue that we should do it with the public involvement, and make sure that we, our community is okay to, if we were to impose this type of, uh, restriction on, on private property. Yeah, okay, yes, and also talking about the trees, you know, for example, they are forecasting a very, uh, strong hurricane season this year, and, uh, the tree, we have a lot of our utilities up on, uh, or, you know, on poles, and, uh, so it's, the, the tree management is also a very, something that needs to be looked at in the village, so we don't lose power at every hurricane or every northeastern. Okay, thank you so much, the next item here I have on, on the agenda, uh, is, uh, our elections, so we have, uh, elections in the village coming up on, uh, June twenty-first, and we have four good candidates, we have Gina Restad, our deputy mayor, Len Zaneri, uh, who is, uh, the trustee that was appointed recently when Bill Manger took over as a mayor, and, uh, Len was the chairperson of the Village Finance Committee for a long time, and the other candidates are Eduardo Simeoni, who was a longtime member, I think over almost eighteen years on this planning commission, and Josh Bilori, uh, a resident from our community. So I encourage everybody on the, to come and vote on, uh, on, uh, June twenty-first, uh, here at the, the, at the cultural center. And the, the next item is any public comment or discussions that we may have? Well, I just wanna announce that because of health reasons, I had, uh, I have handed my resignations to the mayor and the trustees as a co-chair of the planning commission. It was, uh, amazing, uh, I've been on the planning commission for maybe close to twelve or fourteen years, it's been an amazing ride, and I think, uh, this planning commission is very much instrumental in the village, uh, uh, administration, and as a, and part of, and should definitely be, continue to be part of the protocol to, when every, anytime we want to enact a new regulations. So I wish you all the best to continue the good work that we've, that has been started by the planning commission, and I, but I'll, I'll be around in the village, I just, we, we need to be taking care of some health issues. All right, thank you so much, so the next, next one is to just adjourn the meeting, and if there's another discussions?
Just that, uh, when, Michelle and Christian, the next time you're in Village Hall, I have some documents for you to, to pick up.
Okay, okay, I think it's the financial disclosures.
Yep.
Okay, fantastic, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and our next meeting is July eleventh.